Clover is a joint.
All right, Clover, we have this for you. Congratulations. Good job. And I think you want to get a picture real quick. Hold that up. If it all rise, we'll have Clover lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Whenever you're ready, go ahead and start.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, and every being just.
Thanks, Clover. And you don't have to stay the whole meeting if you don't want to. You're free to. Business meeting of the board to go through things that we do every month for the school district. Oh, yeah, that's not. Thank you, guys. Thank you. We understand. Thanks. All right, so we have shared vision in the Farnery School District, provide excellence for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential. We're always happy to have parents and other community members at our meetings. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us. As a reminder, school board meetings and work sessions are meetings of the board held in public. Provide an opportunity to observe the board's discussions and actions in an effort to conduct official board business. We ask that the audience be respectful and refrain from questions, comments, and unnecessary noise while the board conducts the meeting. This is an opportunity for citizen comment. There is an opportunity for citizen comment tonight. And the board looks forward to hearing from those who signed up. I would share some reminders when we get to that section if you're there now. So public comment, the Farnery School Board encourages public input. A person wanting to provide public comment will need to complete the summit and submit an intent to speak form to the board secretary by 1:00 P. M. On the day of the board meeting. Public comment is limited to the place on the agenda, not to exceed a total of thirty minutes for all common commenters. A person giving public comment is limited to a service time of three minutes. While speaking, my speakers may during public meeting offer objective criticism of school operations and programs, the board will not hear person personal personnel com- com- compliments, sorry, concerning district personnel nor against any any person connected with the school system. Please state your name, and if you're a resident of the district, speaking for an organization, state the name of the organization. The board refers deserves the right to refer the matter to the administration. So we have one, I'm May Trout. And when you're ready, then go. When you're ready, go for it. Thank you for being here.
This is Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Directors McCann, Zola, and Graham Adams. My name is Maya Trout. I live in the district. I have two sons, one at Elmira Elementary and one at the middle school. First, I would like to thank each of you for your time and dedication given to this district and to our community. I'm here tonight to speak in support of bond measure twenty-three fifty-four. You voted unanimously in February to place this bond on the ballot for the upcoming May election. I'm asking each of you to continue with that spirit of solidarity, moving forward and actively support and promote the passing of this bond for the betterment of our students and community. A political action committee has been formed called the PAC for FRSD Bond. As chair of this PAC, I would like to invite each of you to join us in the coming weeks as we spread accurate and detailed information about the bond. Your united support around this issue is imperative to its passing. Specifically sharing positive messaging on your personal social media, joining us at community and school events where you can hand out information and help answer questions. Take a stack of our postcard mailers and handwrite a personal message to our voters. And stand with us as we wave signs to show the community that every member of our board wants to get this passed for our kids. My remaining time is obviously not long enough to speak to all the capital investments specified in the bond. But I would like to highlight some that we believe every member of this voting district would support and some others that are important to me personally. Next week, we hope you will join us at V E S, E H S, and the middle school, which will all be hosting community tours to give people an opportunity to see some of our needs firsthand. The Manita Elementary Gymnasium is a gathering place not only for the kids but for the community as a whole. It is in desperate need of a complete upgrade from floor to ceiling, not for aesthetics but for safety. And if you've ever had to park there for an event, you know that the lot is deteriorating, and there are not enough spaces to accommodate the population that utilizes the school. Speaking of parking lots, it has become a bit of a joke that I opined on the middle school's pickup debacles. It is of no fault of their own, and improvements have been made this year to parking and flow issues, but a reconfiguration of the lot would keep traffic from coming to a standstill on territorial at three-twenty every school day. I have two very STEM-driven children, with technology, engineering, and science being so integral to the future workplace. Giving our kids a modern science wing at the middle school and updated science labs at the high school will only promote thoughtful inquiry and maybe even career exploration. And how about Friday night lights and track and field and walking trails for kids and adults alike? The state's awesome grant of six million dollars would allow us the opportunity to make Elmira High School's outdoor athletic campus something everyone else can be proud of. A synthetic turf field, a covered grandstand, a brand new regulation four-hundred-meter track, and new concessions facilities would be a jewel to our small. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to approval of the past minutes from March.
I move that we approve the minutes as written for March eleventh of twenty-four.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes as written from March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next is Ms. Bennett for the enrollment report.
All right, there you go. Good evening. As of April first, our in-district enrollment was at twelve ninety, which is five fewer than the previous month. According to our budgeted numbers, we are down fifty-six for in-district. At the elementary level, we are down by thirty-five. At the middle school level, we are down by six. At the high school level, we are down by fifteen. And we also have nine more out-of-district placements than what was originally budgeted for. And that is all I have on the monthly enrollment report unless the board has any questions.
I think so. Thank you.
Okay. I think I have a few things on my agenda. All right, so the March thirty-first general fund revenue and expense report. We have received ninety-three percent of our budgeted revenue, which is slightly higher than the same time last year. We have spent sixty percent of our operating expenditures, which is comparable to the sixty-three percent we spent at the same time last year. And there's nothing really abnormal to report on that unless the board has any questions.
If you have a question, please. So in the operating expenditures.
Yes.
Salaries and benefits, I just noticed that in March it jumped. The salaries jumped by eighty-one, over eighty-one thousand, and the benefits jumped by over sixty-one thousand, and I just want to those words.
Yeah, the licensed group per their bargaining agreement, they have the option to have their July and August pay in March or in June. And we typically have, you know, anywhere from twenty to thirty teachers take it in in March versus June. So that's why payroll expenses are typically always much larger in March. And in June, it'll be much larger, like three times our normal amount.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There's no other questions? We do need to have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve from March thirty-first, twenty-two fourth, manual report. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four expenditure report. Any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. All right, you want to talk about the resolution also?
Yeah, I have a supplemental budget. Hopefully you all were able to review the memorandum that I wrote up on the supplemental budget. We used to do supplemental budgets almost yearly, sometimes a couple of times a year. But due to the underspending the last few years, we haven't had to do one for a while. So this isn't abnormal necessarily. We used to do them quite frequently. And this is allowed per O R S two-nine-four-four-seven-one, where a school district can amend its adopted budget to accommodate on a current or conditions that is not ascertained when preparing the original adoption of the budget. And we had a few few situations. We might be fine, but I'm a little concerned. We're going to get close to the appropriations, so I'd rather be safe than sorry. Did you guys get the memo and were you able to review it? I can just kind of go over it. A brief overview of it. The transactions in the supplemental budget for the general fund reflect changes in special education expenditures as well as a transfer for our paid lunch equity. You might not be familiar with the paid lunch equity, but that is also something that used to be done annually. But it has not been done since prior to COVID, and this is due to, we were offering seamless summer lunches. And you have to have prior year's numbers to work off to get those amounts. So this is the first year that's kicking back in. Next year, you'll see it again. It won't be as large of an amount because we're kind of playing catch-up at this point. The supplemental budget also appropriates greater resources and the special revenue. This is mostly due to the S I A grant. When we adopted the budget, we weren't certain on what the full allocation was. It ended up coming in higher, so we have to have you adopt those appropriations in order for us to spend what we have in our S I A plan. Let me see, what else is there? Um, the special revenue also recognizes the transfer for the paid lunch equity. So when you transfer money out of the general fund into the special revenue fund, which is where our food service fund is, you have to adopt that in as well. And then also the pass-through funds, the state school funds pass through to the charter school. They have more students than we had adopted in the budget, so I had to increase that some as well. But that is pretty much a broad overview of it. But if the board has any questions, I'm here to answer them. I will try my best to answer them.
So thank you for answering that one on the budget. And then on salaries and bud- and benefits for elementary counselor, that's over a hundred seventeen thousand. Is that for salary and benefits, and is that for one teacher, one counselor?
That's for salaries and benefits for a teacher.
Thank you. And then the food services. Various equipment. Do you know what that various equipment is?
Um, I don't. We, I mean, we have several pieces of equipment that the food service is purchasing. By law, we're only allowed to carry over so much funds in the food service account, so every year we have to purchase various equipment. I know they purchased some new utensils. There's a new oven warmer they purchased. We are also going to be purchasing an air fryer, so those those type of things.
All right, there's no other questions? We need a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four, side zeros two.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash O two.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four. Any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
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 The both. Motion carries five to zero. All right. Sure. Food service contract, we issued an RFP a few months ago. We only had one respondent to that. That was Chartwell's. There was three people, myself, Juana, and Ms. Marshall. Went through it. We've had no problems with Chartwell's. They've been a good partner. Our recommendation is to renew our contract with them. All right. So we would like to have board action for this, to renew that food service contract.
I make a motion that we approve the school food service contract with Chartwell. I'll second that.
There are a motion, a second, to approve the food service contract with Chartwell's. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Is, um, so so I am actually learning things, and I under- I understand the whole Chartwell, because they're the only ones that came forward for that. But just recently, hasn't Elmira Elementary and Manita Elementary had work done for their kitchens? I'm just trying to understand. We have kitchens, which Chartwell uses. So then our our staff is just for giving it to the children?
It's all their staff.
It's all their staff.
The kitchens, I mean, obviously, this building has a new kitchen. Benita's in the last bond had an upgrade before. They just kind of had basically a closet where they would
warm and
roll in hot racks and serve right out of there. But all the people at the buildings, the lunch ladies or Chartwell's employees or lunch man.
Okay, so also, all those people are hired by Chartwell. They're not through the district.
Similar to bus drivers. Those are our two main contractors. First student, all their folks drive the bus, they're not our employees, all the people that make, prepare, serve, purchase, handle all the paperwork and reporting are are Chartwell's employees.
Okay, so pretty much the whole lunch, the whole kitchen thing has been contracted out.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Moving into reports, that would be tonight. The elementary report is first.
Yay. Um, so when I timed this, I was at about twenty minutes. I'm going to try to make it. I, right? I'm going to try to go fast. Okay, first of all, go ahead. Next slide. We have three hundred forty-four students right now. Last year, we were sitting at about three hundred and fifty-five, three sixty. And we did not get as many kindergartners this year as we have the previous year. We had sixty-five the previous year, and we have forty-five this year. So we went down by a few. Fifteen classrooms, fourteen of those are K five, and one is our structured learning center, and then forty-five staff members. And Lisa, when I talk about this, I am including cafeteria staff, even though we don't, they're, we don't pay them, but we feel like they're part of our people. Regular attenders, this is something that we monitor for O D E. And one thing that I'm sure you guys are all aware of, regular attenders were those who attend ninety percent of the school year. So what what's kind of tricky about this is when we have kids who go on hunting trips or on a week-long vacation, they're down, right? They might get sixty percent. But as the year goes on, if they don't take any more days off, they actually go up and become regular attenders. And so right now, V E S overall is seventy-two point three eight percent of regular attenders. And you'll notice the third grade is our highest one, and those teachers say they feel that. And they love them. Okay, next slide. State assessments from last spring. And E L A again is another one of the goals that we have for O D E. Our third graders, we hit forty-eight percent. The state was at forty. Fourth grade, we were at forty-nine. State was at forty-three. Fifth grade definitely had a deficit there. You know, we would like to say that everyone is able to test equally. We had fourteen kids on reading I U Ps in fifth grade last year, which was a huge number. Typically, you're more at seven or eight maybe for grade level, so it was it was a big bit. Math, we did. Oh, and then the composite, that's the state report card that comes out. You can look it up. I look up on Oregon Live. Anyway, we were right at that the state was at. It's a composite. Math, we did better. Third, fifty-eight percent. State was at forty. Fourth grade, fifty-four to thirty-eight, and then fifth, you're equal. And our composite on the state report firms, forty-eight percent versus the state's thirty-seven. So what I thought I would do, you know, we talked about what we have, all of our staff, all of our activities, but not sure that you know what happens on a daily basis with kids. So I thought I would just go through real quick and kind of show you how the day is broken up for kids. So go ahead. First thing, when they get there before school, doors open at seven-thirty. They have from seven-thirty to seven-fifty-five. And they can either eat breakfast, go outside and play, go to the library, or fourth, fifth graders have some jobs sometimes. Usually, they start, most of them start by eating breakfast and then do one of the others. Go to the next slide. It's patrons of the youth kids. So we pride ourselves on having every aide out doing something with kids first day. So I have fourteen aides who are there at that time of day. And they are out greeting kids. They're out helping them at lunch. They're out doing all sorts of things with them. By the time a student comes in the door, they've already met, seen five aides by the time they come in the front door. We are able to catch things. We're able to catch some joy, right? And we can celebrate with them. We also catch if something is wrong. I made a call to V H S just the other day because of something that child told Raina there at the stop sign as he was getting off the bus. And we're able to just take care of those things really quickly. We get things in place, call the counselor, deal with whatever it is, because we've had so much to do with these kids. And the you'll see the, over on the left in the middle, recyclers. They're over on the right in the middle also. Fourth grade does recycling on Thursdays, so that's a fourth grade specific job. Go ahead. Okay, so every child in our school gets ninety minutes of core reading instruction, right? So that is that's at whatever grade level they are at, not their instructional level, but whatever grade level they're at. So the text is very complex. When I used to teach third grade, there were some stories that were twenty pages long. And they were, they were very hard. We get them through that, right? We read to them or help them read with a partner so that they can can get that complex text. They get the vocabulary at their grade level, grammar, wherever else they need at their grade level. Sometimes it's in whole groups, sometimes it's small groups, but every student at Manita and Elmira gets ninety minutes. And also, just as an added integrity that you guys saw last time, that comes through in this ninety-minute course also for the younger grades. And then we have cute pictures, the whole group, small group. The two books, I think I talked last time about this last year about this, but we have these consumables now. And so everything is done in the in the consumable books. They can write in it. They can look for inferences. They can do whatever in the text. Okay, at Manita, we also do an additional thirty minutes of reading when time, what I need each day. So hundred and twenty minutes of reading we do. This is at their level. So they have thirty minutes at their level. If they are on an I E P and need to go get special help for reading, they go there. If they are a little bit low, they go to title. If they're high, they go to somewhere and they read chapter books, right? So it's what I need. It's whatever level they are. In general, everyone kind of drops everything and helps whatever grade level it is at that during that thirty minutes. So we have six titled people with their teacher. We have four sped special education aides and then the teacher, and then we have the grade level teacher. So at any given time, during that thirty minutes, we have twelve people who can take proofs. And it is, it's nice because everyone is going somewhere during that time. So there's no stigma of you're getting called out to go to your special education group because everyone's going somewhere. Like. I know you should be. Few kids. Go ahead. Math, every student receives a minimum of sixty to seventy-five minutes of math. It used to be in our last, in our old curriculum and that they ask for ninety minutes. This new curriculum says sixty to seventy-five, everything taught during that. So that's what we've gone with. We have a new curriculum this year, envisioned math. It's generally whole group, but sometimes there's small group work cut out in that. Teachers are, let me see, that's one of those one. Teachers are liking the new curriculum. It's a steep learning curve. America can attest to it. So they are teaching like in fourth grade, they're teaching strategies that they are assuming in their curriculum that kids have learned in third grade, second grade, first grade. But this is our first year, everyone's, so teachers are kind of playing catch-up. But they're liking the consumables. They're liking the bottom right. I know you can't really see that, but it's for the online portion of curriculum. Teachers are really liking their videos to go along with every lesson. There there are slides to go along with every lesson, keeps kids more more entertained, which is kind of what kids, unfortunately, these days hope for. And okay, social emotional learning. Every student at Manita Elementary receives thirty minutes of S C L time. And I say most days because this is where if something goes awry, this is the time to kind of take it from. But for the most part, people are getting, kids are getting thirty minutes of S C L. At the beginning of the year, that starts out looking like teaching school rules, right? A week of school rules, classroom rules. It goes to second step lessons. It goes to Kelsso, learning small to solve small problems. And our counselor comes in twice, twice a month.
One device depending on.
And teaches a social emotional lesson. Sometimes it's just class meetings. Sometimes if a teacher sees the kids are not doing well, it can just be a quiet time of coloring. And that's Espen, our behavior specialist. He doesn't know that I put this in here. About teaching Kelsso's classes. P E, every student at Manita gets thirty minutes of P E each day, taught by our certified teacher. Usually it's in the gym, sometimes it's outside on the track in nicer weather. Some kids in P E today. Science and social studies. So students receive between thirty and fifty minutes per day of science or social studies. Wonders has a lot of nonfiction in it. That's our reading curriculum. And so generally, teachers will be reading about something like, for example, second grade, community helpers, right? It's in the Wonders book, but it's also part of their social studies standards. And so they'll cross-reference and teach the social studies that's going on in the reading program with social studies or the reading program. Same thing with science, and what we're looking forward to next year is a couple of the science programs that we're looking at adopting actually have a crosswalk with Wonders. So it tells you, if you're teaching week three of Wonders, you can do this science activity with it, and it'll go just dovetail with it, which would be pretty cool. Lunch and recess, everyone gets thirty minutes for lunch. If they're, they get fifteen minutes, they have to stay in there and eat. And then they can go out for the other fifteen as a recess, but if they take the full thirty to eat, they can take the full thirty. They just don't get a recess. That doesn't happen very often because everyone wants to go out to recess. I'll hold on. I'm still doing the next times. All grades. Um, all grades also receive either fifteen or thirty minutes of additional recesses. Grades three, four, five only get an additional fifteen minutes of recess. K-one, two, get thirty. That can be counted as educational, what do you call that?
Instructional.
Instructional minutes because there's learning problem solving and stuff like that. So the state says. All grades, K-one, two, and then three, four, five do not. Again, cute kids. Other special activities. So this, this is a huge catch-all, and I have these all broken out on the next slide. We have artist residence and musical, musical experiences every year. We also have PALS-sponsored activities. We also have fifth grade advisors. I'll explain about those in a little bit. We have Start Making a Reader Today Smart Program, Roots of Empathy, and OBOB. And these things don't necessarily happen at all the grade levels, but at individual grade levels they do. So go ahead and go to the first one. Fifth grade advisors and helpers. So our fifth grade teachers have an application process for fifth graders. They write an essay, tell why they think they should be a fifth grade advisor. They have to have their parents sign off, they have to have a teacher, a previous teacher, sign off and say that they would be responsible kids. And then they give me those, I read through them and I choose, I think I have eight of them this time. So they come to me, beginning of school, they choose the spirit days for the whole year. And they'll give me a list of ten spirit days, I then take it to the staff. And we make sure that we don't have any that we don't want. But we honor, we honor what they're saying also. And they, I give them a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar budget. And I show them how to get onto Oriental Trading. It's where you can buy little trinkety things. And they have to come back to me with a list of items that they think should be purchased for that amount. Then we get together and we talk about, we call up each one on the website. And, you know, there are these discussions about whether we should or should not buy that item. You know, they really liked the really expensive things and they find out they only get thirty of them for fifty dollars. And that's just not, not a good use of their money. So that's a lot of fun. And they, during assemblies, they hand out class acts to reward other classes' good behavior. And they raise the flags in the morning. So Jeff Green teaches them how to raise the flag. The custodian takes it down at night, but they do the raising of the flags in the morning. They help pals with special events. So if Janie, our pals president, needs something done, you know, put into baggies or something, those kids will come, they'll spend fifteen minutes helping her assembly line. She can get things done quicker. They come in, you see the kids with the folders at the top there. Those are transportation folders that go out at the end of the day that have bus notes. Anything else that teachers need at the end of the day. So those fifth grade advisors go take those out to the classrooms at the end of the day. And then the other thing that we started before COVID and kind of got rid of until this year, and Ashley Fisher, our counselor, has been a big help with this, is she has certain fifth grade helpers who, they wear that lanyard, did a little lanyard. Those are all of KELSO's choices, those are solving small problems and ways to solve small problems. And those fifth grade advisors are taught by her how to interact with younger kids. They go out to recess and the younger kids, she went into the younger kid classes and explained to them that they can go to these fifth grade kids, get help with their small problems. She also is very clear about if it's a bigger problem than a fifth grader can handle, fifth grader needs to go to the grown-ups out there and tells the younger kids that, that they need to go to the, an adult with a bigger problem. Smart reading, Start Making a Reader Today. That's Sue Craig and Amy Humphrey up in the top. Those are the leaders, the board leaders of it. They have eighteen, twenty, eighteen to twenty volunteers that come in Mondays and Thursdays, and they read with our kids, second grade right now. Roots of Empathy. Roots of Empathy right now is for first grade. Roots is, I've talked about this before, it's a worldwide program. Basically, it started in Canada. And basically, it takes a baby, they bring a baby into a certain class the whole year, starting at age three months, three months old. That instructor, the woman with her hand up in the top left, there is the instructor for that baby. And she comes in and pre-teaches what the baby's going to be doing that month. And she teaches kids how to use their, their observation, observational skills. And it's through the year, they, they track how the baby is doing, what changes the baby has, the emotions of the baby. And it's been shown in studies to create lifelong empathy in these kids. OBOB, I think most of you know about OBOB. Kids sign up, third, fourth, and fifth graders, they sign up. We had thirty-eight of them this year. They signed up to read sixteen books or as many as sixteen books as they can. And then starting in February, they have battles against each other. Nate, there in the middle, is not a third, fourth, or fifth grader. He is a parent. It's Raina Bondarant, you know her, she's one of our aides, she works, she's worked at the gym. And her husband, he has volunteered since September, every Friday, two hours of his day, every Friday, to be the coach to all of those kids. That's him in the top left. Also, his daughter Joss is right next to him. That was the winning team from Veneta. Those were the fluffy marshmallows. And they went to regionals, didn't get past the morning, but they had good time. And Oregon Country Fair Grant, I'm sure most of you know. We, Oregon Country Fair is very generous to the schools out here. It's, I think they only do Triangle Lake, Burn Ridge, and Pro maybe that they give scholarships to. I don't, you don't know, I keep looking at you. Sorry. And we get about thirty-five-hundred dollars a year from them. And we can do whatever we want as far as giving an artist residency. So this year, we did tie-dye, we've done drumming, we've done glass fusing, we've done all of it. Every year, we get it. We also yeah, also have been fortunate enough to have Jen Senate teach a three-week residency in ukulele for the past two years. She also teaches some music once a week to our youngest kids. And then spirit days and assemblies, of course. Crazy Heritage, again, things that fifth graders choose. The one that's pretty touching to me is that bottom right-hand one. And the orange shirts, those were homemade by a parent. So when the fifth graders came to me this year with their spirit days, the one thing they said on it is, we want to have Orange Day. Like, what the heck are you even talking about? And they said, well, that's leukemia awareness. And they have a fifth grade here who had a sister, she was an incoming kinder this year, was supposed to be an incoming kinder, and she died of leukemia in August. And these kids just surrounded that fifth grade sister with love. She explained to them about the significance of orange in her family, that it was leukemia awareness, and they made the choice to have one of our spirit days be leukemia awareness day. So I reached out to the mother. And she was in favor of it, she thought it was great. She thought it was very touching, reached out to all the parents in the school and explained briefly what it was. And it was our most participated day. And you can see this parent went out and bought her kids orange shirts and were alone. And we had orange headbands, we had all sorts of things. It was great, we gave everyone orange hearts, stickers. And then last but not least, PALS is so important for our school. They fund five-hundred dollars for every teacher for field trips. They do playground enhancements, they did that cheater totter, they're giving us two new picnic tables. They're resurfacing, they're rebarking the tracks this summer. Last year, they bought every teacher three-hundred dollars in STEM kits. They give every teacher two-hundred dollars each year for supplies, they bring in snacks. And they do a kudo store once a month where they either do popcorn or popsicles or give the kids prizes based on, they bring kudos in, there are reward system. And they are buying our OBOB books and pretty much anything we need, we just go and ask for it and then make it. Okay. That's spoken requirement, I think. Any questions?
I do, yeah. So on the math, it runs in nine minutes. And the teacher's love it and getting that available.
You know, it's based on what the publisher has told us their lessons are taught. So we just go with what the publisher says they need. Some teachers are spending an extra, they're, they're using above and beyond that time on like iXL, a computer program we have, or Rocket Math to get fluency in. So I would, I would say most teachers are probably still at ninety minutes. They're just at sixty to seventy-five in this curriculum. But on our official schedule, we just put in seventy-five minutes. Well, we'll look at data. I mean, we do things based on data. So when we see what happens with state testing this year and what happens with these CVMs at the end of the year when they change it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next report is from the Family Resource Center. And is online.
Hi, thank you all for allowing me to join you virtually. And I really appreciate Gary and Michelle inviting me to come and talk tonight. My name is Amy Hand. I am the T-12 Family Resource Coordinator for the district. And we have another employee that works with our Family Resource Center, her name is Heather Amrane. She works with our pre-K families. I put together a little slide presentation and I'll just kind of go over what we have been up to and what our hopes and dreams are for the future and just kind of give a little overview of, of who I am and what we're doing. So I'm going to try to share my screen and we'll go right here to present. Are you doing it, Michelle? I can't hear you if you if you're talking.
Can you hear us?
Okay, I mean, if that's, if you're going to share it, that's totally fine. So we'll just start off with the, the current project. So right now, we are doing two different parent education programs. We are working with Make Parenting a Pleasure. That is happening at Veneta Elementary School in our Family Resource Room. We're working with families with kids under, in the pre-K realm. We have eight families that have been consistently coming to a twelve-week program. We have two weeks left in that, and that's been really fun. Starting Wednesday, in two days, we're working with collaborative problem solving in that partnership with the Riverview Center for Growth, formerly known as the Child Center. And we're focusing this parent education opportunity on families with children from the eighth to twelfth grade realm of things, giving a little support to those parents of teenagers. And right now, we have a current ongoing, now a year and a half now, working with Daisy Chain, which is a nonprofit based out of Eugene that engages tiny people in learning sign language and singing songs. And they are coming out through the Ferment Library. We have the Connie Room there every other Tuesday, where they lead groups of families in song. And then they also provide nursing support. They have a certified international lactation consultants that come and help new moms with feeding and problems, and they weigh babies. And it's just a really neat way to feel supported as a, as a new parent. We are doing a parent and taught meetup every Monday at the Veneta Park, rain or shine. And that gets a really good, good return. We have, we see lots of families coming to that. We started partnering with the Rain County Diaper Bank starting last summer. And every Wednesday, we are giving free diapers out to people in the community who are in need. And we are doing a partnership with Applegate Regional Theater. It started last year and we're continuing it this year. I'm really excited about that for formalware kind of rentals and loans for, for students for prom. And on Wednesday, Kelly and I are going to be meeting up at the high school and studying up a display. And we're partnering with Mrs. Wright Runden, the theater teacher up at the high school. And we're going to create a showroom in the theater so students can come and shop for formalware for prom. So that's been really fun. Some of the accomplishments that we have been up to as far as funding those and how we're able to start creating these programs and maintaining them is that we are continuing to receive the United Way grants and are funding through that. And that funds Heather's position. And we have been also receiving an additional parent education funding through OPEC. We've applied for and received the Brady Grant for two years running, which is a small grant, but it targets specific children in need. So you nominate them and then they, it is there, this to be set on that moment. We also applied for and received the Roundhouse Grant and the Otten Grant. We have received OEA Foundation Grants for over fifteen students in the last two years. And that is another one where you nominate a student and it's a hundred dollars per student, which is pretty great. Some of the other things that we've done, we've been really networking with community partners. Here's a slide on this one, our projection, we are applying for a grant right now through the Yard Foundation for Their Healthy Families Initiative that could be a fifty thousand dollars. So we're hopeful. And that's why you see the big jump, but it's, it's just hopeful money right now. And so we've been working with establishing more robust community partners, you know, working with Ferment Library, Midland Cares and the Love Project, Rain County Public Health, United Way. And that's just been really fun. We've had two years of doing a community engagement tonight. The first year was at Omira Elementary School, and this year we were at Veneta Elementary School. And that's just been a really fun way to bring different service organizations together to present to families and, and staff like what, what's available and how, how to, you know, access these resources for families. And we we've been maintaining and keeping these parent and taught meetups group. We've had over forty-nine families attending since the spring of two thousand and three. We established a relationship with the Family for Every Child, which is a local organization, helping the, kind of bridging the gap between foster care and adoption and being unhoused. So it's a program for kids, I think fourteen and up. And so that's a neat host home program. There's some information about it at Midland Cares. And we've been able to network that with an organization called Fifteen Tonight to help some of our students who are maybe couch surfing and not staying with their families kind of get a little leg up. We've boop, 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 I'm going to switch, can we keep going on to the back? For service delivery, some of the things that we've accomplished is, you know, establishing the Family Resource Room at Veneta Elementary School thanks to the support of Miss Lady. And that's been really wonderful to have a space where we can kind of be available for people and to give out diapers and to have the parenting classes. There's some pictures, I think on the next slide maybe, of the inside of the Family Resource Center room. There's clothes, there's, oh, there's the Daisy Scene sign, it's so cute. And there's clothes, there's, you know, parent lending library, there's children's books. We have stuff for babies, we have stuff for, you know, up to small adult clothes in there. So that's been really great. We, I established a free store at Omira High School. It's been going now for almost two years, and that's been a joy. I open on Friday mornings and Friday lunches at their school. And in the free store, there's hygiene products, school supplies, clothes, and then with the support of the Love Project, snacks. So I have things that kids can take home like canned soup and macaroni and cheese and ramens for the weekend, but also I try to have, you know, granola bars and, you know, cup of noodles. And I, I love bringing in like donuts in the morning. And every kid likes to make hot cocoa. And it's a real special time just saying good morning to these high schoolers and, you know, helping them start off their, their day on a little brighter foot. And that's given me a really great opportunity to kind of be that, that first person, kind of like Lisa was saying, you know, you kind of identify if someone's having a, a bad day or if things aren't going so well or if they're in a great mood. So you kind of get that first little alert. And we purchased and delivered, with the support from Midland Cares, we were able to purchase and deliver Thanksgiving mealboxes to families who were in need. And that was really special. The United Way gave a seventy-five, fifty-dollar gift card to Walmart, which we were able to give out at Christmas time, which also was pretty fantastic. We partnered with Free Bikes for Kids at the end of spring last year and got bicycles to students who needed bicycles. And right now, we've got some upcoming projects happening. You know, the partnership with the Applegate Regional Theater and the prom dresses is something that's on the docket. We're already starting our pre-planning for the next realm of Make Parenting a Pleasure in the fall and the next realm of collaborative problem solving in the fall. We're going to be alternating those programs with the ages that we're targeting. So in the fall, we'll be offering Make Parenting a Pleasure for students, for parents of students from kindergarten to third grade. And then we'll be offering the collaborative problem solving to parents of students from the fourth to the seventh grade. And then we'll switch it to the spring and go back to pre- And then we'll switch it to the spring and go back to pre-K and then the, the older kiddos. So that's been, I think, a really, I'm really excited to see how the, the education programs dovetail with each other and how that kind of makes a positive impact with our parents and students in the community. We are hoping for this, uh, yard grant to come through. Um, some of the ideas that we have with that is a, a little pee-wee soccer. We are in the works of talking with Territorial Sports Program, and they're on board with helping us with their field. And so we want to target that for this year, maybe for just two to three-year-olds, and then next year fold in, uh, three and four-year-olds to that. Um, Back to Youth is a really neat program that does outdoor camps for, um, eleven to seventeen-year-olds, eleven to eighteen-year-olds. And we're working with them to try to bring some of their programming, um, either into the district or provide some scholarships for summer camps for our kids of that age. So that's exciting as well. Uh, Miss Denny, who does the ukulele lessons, is interested in partnering with us to do some ukulele in the park this summer. And we are also, uh, taking over a program that one of our community moms started called Little Explorers. And it's been in partnership with the District Farm, and so we're kind of folding that into the umbrella of the Family Resource Center. And so that'll be an opportunity to, more opportunities to do educational, um, outdoor activities for pre-K people. And we have our, uh, our United Way Family Resource Center funding application will be coming in soon. We'll get that signed in. And we've already booked out our agreement with Daisy Chain and the library to continue the music classes throughout the summer. Um, some of the long-term wishes and goals that we have, um, would be to, you know, find a physical location that would allow us to expand and kind of grow our offerings. And so that's a dream. Um, but we are also talking with Well Mama, who has reached out to us about partnering and bringing some of their services out into the community. Um, I worked with the Bethel School District, uh, last year and talked about their middle school mentorship program is really inspiring. It's had some attention from like register guard and like local TV stations, and now that we are hopefully, um, holding on to a new counselor at the middle school, that would be something we could look at for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And, um, we are exploring, there's some new funding available, it's a one-time thing, but it's a full literacy program. And so we're looking into the one-time cost of setting up Raising a Reader, um, program in the school. So that is some of the things that we're up to and what I've been up to, and sorry for talking so much and so quickly, but I appreciate being here, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Gary.
Moving on to Urban Education Association.
I was gonna talk about some upcoming events and some thank yous, and then the bond would be kind of kind of around what teachers are saying. So some upcoming events, many things are already on the board agenda, or Gavin will be discussing some, and I don't wanna steal his thunder. However, some things include, so students in grade levels nine through eleven are forecasting for next year's classes in homeroom this Wednesday. While the seniors are taking their picture. Um, and then there's a home track meet next Wednesday, which is pretty exciting. And I've heard that the Omira relays were a huge success, including the hospitality room, uh, run by the boosters. And I kept hearing these names pop up, and so I wanted to give some thanks to Rebecca Lorenz and Justice Polwell, among others, who just helped make the food and everything amazing from what I saw. People who live there. Um, looks like there were some PR set over weekend and sisters, so I look forward to more when I can help next week at the long jump, triple jump area. And then a couple of shout-outs to Melie Turcura, who will be representing Vinita in the Oregon Mayors Association. If I were a mayor, statewide contests, and JT Myers, being EHS proud by being named a finalist for Woodcrafters of Eugene's Fiction Fantastic Contest. So those were both pretty exciting news recently. Um, and then some thank yous. As teachers, there are always students who challenge us and students who make life a little easier. And sometimes it depends on the day. I'm sure parents and guardians can relate to this with our own children. Sometimes it goes unnoticed, but I just wanted to take a moment and share my appreciation for my students, as I'm sure other teachers would want to do the same. Let's just say that I was having a moment last Thursday morning before school. Students could tell I was sad and upset before first period. And it made me realize how much they care and how they're very considerate and compassionate individuals. It kind of lingered throughout the day where students and staff were checking in on me, and it made me tear up more, but in a good way this time. Um, I just wanted to thank specifically Naveya Joshi, Jake, Ellie Parker, and Lexi, to name a few. Muchas gracias. You make our jobless teachers easy when we have individuals like you in our class. And then the last topic going to the bring up around the bond. So last Wednesday evening, I sent out an email to all members, and I kind of just was like, hey, write one to two sentences or thoughts around the upcoming bond on May twenty-first. And so I just wanted to share with the board, um, just some of the things that people were mentioning. Um, just in support of it, I hope it passes. I know that some, you know, who live in the community addressed, you know, the taxes, but they said it's just kind of a key in getting it passed, um, because taxes are going to stay level. And it's gonna be based on the assessed value, not necessarily what people see on Zillow. Uh, so I think people need to kind of keep that in mind. Um, but you can just see teachers from various schools talking about, you know, you need, we need a facelift. It's going to help out not only, uh, all the different schools, but the community. Um, it's just gonna be a great benefit, um, to everybody, and I'll go a long way in helping update our facilities. And then we can kind of just see scroll down a little bit more to some of the other things that people were saying. I mean, they addressed, you know, when we had the storm in January at the middle school and the tile ceilings came down, um, and just how it's important to just, you know, get that updated and necessary maintenance, um, done. So, uh, this bond will make an impact on everyone. So I just kind of wanted to share, I basically just took the Google forums, all their responses, copied and pasted them into this tablet. Just to share with you guys, what, about twenty percent of them responded, so in about six days' time, uh, we've got about twenty percent of teachers to respond back, so. Uh, so we are hopeful that community members and, and hopefully the board, since it was supported and voted on by each of you to play, be placed on the may ballot, that you will step up to show your support for the bond by helping out events, to spread the word to both guests, waving signs when it gets closer or adding a yard sign. Let us know if you have any questions or wanna talk after the meeting to get more involved with Measure and Plan dash three five four. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this page right here, is there any way that you can send that to me?
Yeah. I'll just get your info after.
All right. Next up is, uh, Gavin, our student representative of the board. Go for it.
We got a long distance select meeting, so there's some things down here in May that, you know, we'll fly away. But like, uh, Miss Snatch said, the craft meet is April seventh, uh, April seventeenth. Um, I did speak with the head coach, uh, Kat Wong earlier. There will be something for the senior night, that is the last home practice, so we'll be seeing you nights. There'll be things this year's there. Uh, I spoke with Principal Vannacar earlier today. She said there'll be the cone ice truck there, truck. She really likes that, uh, you know, snow cone, so she was really excited. She said she might buy a few of those. Um, she bought a lot last time, and they were here all day, so she's might some more, she said. Uh, baseball senior night is May tenth, along with softball is also May tenth, that's a double header. Uh, it's kind of for the coaches, but when I spoke with, uh, Vice Principal Athletic, uh, Mr. Smith, he said that they usually happen before the, uh, the game. That first game starts at two o'clock. The coaches make sure to do it in the middle, so maybe more parents can attend after Friday night, but that is up to the coaches, of course. More information you can find at OSA and athletic.net. Um, our juniors start the state testing, um, April fifteenth. That's in the English, uh, three classes. So let's start that coming up soon. Pals may eleventh, eight to eleven, Port of the My Center, next to the American Arena. That's coming up soon. AP testing for all the AP students are the first two weeks of May. So in May, they'll start taking all those AP tests that they've been, uh, doing a lot of studying for cramming all that information in. We have outdoor school coming up, that's, uh, May nineteenth and twenty-third. We have about forty high school students that'll be going there to, uh, support all the that'll be, uh, attending that, uh, event. So they're looking forward to that. So I got to you tonight. You have any questions?
No, thank you. All right, Mr. Prever. Uh, I will be quick. Um, let's see, she's still here. Ms. Marshall attended the city council meeting tonight. They wrote it this passed a resolution in support of our bond, so that was good news. I wanted to quickly thank Maya for speaking tonight and all the volunteers that are helping with the PAC. Uh, if that, if the bond is successful, it will certainly a better result of your work. District continues to go to job fairs. I mentioned a few weeks ago, we attended the U of O Job Fair. Uh, today, we had some staff at the Western Oregon Job Fair, and Wednesday, we have some staff at the Portland Job Fair. A reminder, Wednesday afternoon, I am out doing the evaluation of Looking Glass Riverfront School in Eugene. Another thing that started at high school, just so you are aware, high school students are currently being, uh, prepared and trained for, uh, first school counseling. So our school's coming up, it'll be the end of May. Um, our high school counselors have already started their training. I think it happens maybe once a week in the middle school uh, in the evening. Um, so that is happening. Uh, last thing, again, kind of going back to the bond, had a meeting last week with, uh, some of the PD teachers, TSB people, and our head varsity coaches, they developed a survey. They came up with various projects, I should say, um, that uh, if there's money left over, if the bond is successful, from the portion that's allocated to athletics, that four or six point nine million um, projects that would be on their wish list. So we created a survey of that, it closes tomorrow. We'll then have this data and information um, to consider in the years to come as potential projects. Uh, another thing I wanted to mention about the bond, uh, Mr. Rose and I are working on a community Q and A to take place the evening of April twenty-fifth. Uh, once I get solid, I'll start to promote it. It'll be virtual, uh, Zoom. We'll share the link uh, as many ways as we can. I'll be on there to do a short five or ten-minute summary of information on the bond and then take any questions. That's all I have. All right, any questions? All right, um, under discussion items, we'll start with, uh, the first reading of a number of proposed policy updates. I know there's more to come in the future. This is the first reading, please look through those and if you have any questions about those prior to our next meeting, get a hold of Mr. Prever. And then hopefully we can get those voted on at our next meeting. Uh, next also is a first reading of a proposed twenty-four, twenty-five meeting schedule for the board. And we'll take a look at that to see if there's any dates that conflict with anything, um, like national championship basketball games or any of those seven things. But, yeah, so take a look at that, and if you have any questions, uh, or if there's any dates you know are not gonna work for some reason for the whole group, then get those dates to Michelle, I believe, probably would be good. Uh, next up, under personnel, we have two resignations, uh, teachers, uh, one from Maria and one from Omira, that we need to have forward action on to approve their resignation.
I move that we accept the resignation, so Ellie Schloss and Anne Caswell.
We have a motion to section, section to, a second to, uh, approve the resignation of Ellie Schloss and, and Caswell. Any discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And we do have, uh, just a report for the board of the non-licensed personnel. We have an instructional assistant resigned and hiring of a JV baseball coach. Probably good, so seasons have been going for a while, but I believe that was somewhat delayed higher. All right. Tyler Coley from Omira Elementary. All right. Any late or closing items? I have one. We did discuss prior, um, exit interviews, uh, as far as when the board would like to get reports on those. Um, it was suggested, uh, that possibly we could do it, uh, in Ju- July. When we have our board, we call it a retreat, but it's really a work session. And, uh, and then possibly six months prior to that. And that would be Yeah, so I mean, if, if that sounds good, or if you wanna think about it more, we can vote it at our next meeting, but it'd be nice to have a motion a second to set those dates for us to look at the current, or look at whatever inter- excellent views we have. And it's something that maybe we talk about at our retreat, what's that work session, about what exactly we want to use those exit interviews for, um, if it's different than what we are currently using them for. Um, probably July, and that's usually when we have our work session. Um, and then at a meeting six months. Yeah, if we were gonna do it twice a year, messages, it would be January and July.
So for example, this time around, we only have two, or is, is that right, two?
I think three so far. Oh, a lot more by June, I assume.
Right, but, um, so my concern is that if we vote to get an update in January, December or January, um, we are going to be running into, um, not being able to uh, hide the the responses of individuals.
Oh, you might know who they are.
Yes.
Yeah, could, could be a an issue.
Could we do an executive session?
Say that again. Oh, your, the names will be eliminated, but if only two people have designed between August and January, we would know who they are. There'll be very few people.
If they both fill it out, yeah.
I think that, that's what we're sharing.
Yeah, yeah, that's very concerning because
For example, so far this year, we only have three pieces. Pretty easy. I think we figured out.
We've had more than three.
And I think really the context of them, I mean, I, a week or two ago, I had Michelle send me what we had, and I read through them. And frankly, you're gonna be able to tell who they are anyways. But, you know, I'll, I'll give an example. Mr. Story filled one out. Well, he was our district facilities guy. You can tell by the context of his answers that he was our district. Um, anyway. Um, but yeah, we do wanna make sure folks, you know, when they fill those out, we want them to do it in a way that's, they're, you know, saying what they want to say and fully disclose about their names. So they, they definitely don't enter their names anywhere on there.
Right.
They just, uh, but
But where, and the other, that's the, my other concern is that, um, what are they told about how their data can be used?
Yeah, well, when this came up from the board, it was my impression, maybe it was wrong, that the exit interviews were gonna be information to be used by the district for me, and/or to share that with building principals. So we'll take, for example, at the high school, had four staff members fill out their exit survey. I would look it over. Uh, maybe discuss some of it in the, in the review evaluation of the principal at the high school and share all the information with the principal of high school, so they would Maybe discuss some of it in the, in the review evaluation of the principal at the high school and share all the information with the principal of high school, so they would have. But if the board is wanting to use the, so the way I chose questions to ask, it was in that vein. If the board is wanting to use exit surveys for something else. Then the board probably needs to identify what that is, and then look at the questions that are being asked, because that's the questions that I chose. Were in that vein to gather feedback from the district to share with the rest. But for now. I think the decision is, do you want them? Once a year, twice a year, or something more often than that?
I'd be fine once a year personally. And especially if it'd be, I think it'd be better to have it in July, just because that way. It's actually, I mean, people maybe leave to go to the job or or whatever, and they, they chose to fill them out and.
I really feel like this is a slippery slope and.
And I'd be fine if we didn't see them at all, for the content that they have now, it's not really for us. It's like, like Gary said, that it's for him and the building principals or other people.
It really.
On the administrative team.
It really does not feel like. Something that is. Our purview. We have hired Mr. Carpenter to be. The personnel, you know, chief human resources officer, that's the person who needs to be getting the exit interviews. And, and if, if we feel like we want to change that. We need to have, we need to have a. A work, we need to work on, we need to decide how we're going to use them. And what questions are going to get at what information we want. And that doesn't. Feel like. It doesn't feel like. We are. Right now. Gary has chosen the questions for a specific purpose. If we want to use them for another purpose, then we're going to have to redesign. The exit survey to get at what we. Or some of us. Want to get at.
So there doesn't have to be a motion, there could be a motion tonight that we don't. Ever get the. Exit surveys, or we don't ever see them, that could be a motion, it'd be a motion that. We get them once a year, it can be a motion, we get them four times a year, it can be a motion, then we give them three times a year, two times a year, it's really up to the board, what we do with these exit interviews, or what. What the district does with them. So I'd be fine with not seeing them at all, personally.
I actually have a question. The, the law firm that handles our human resources questions, have you talked to them? About this?
No, but I have talked to other districts. And they, I looked into this, board asked me to look into it, there was, I was surprised that. Of seventeen school districts in Lane County, about half of them did this. Some of them, it was just an internal thing, it wasn't shared with the board, and others, once a year. Over the summer, shared this summit of data to the board, the one in particular, I remember talking to about that was Springfield. But I would probably, and Four J, I talked to Sid, he said Four J is kind of same thing, they give maybe five percent, they had. You know, a hundred people even in a year, they'd get. Six or eight or whatever, them filling them out, so in the larger systems. You know, it's probably a little harder to figure out. Who it is that's filling out, I, I mean, I could reach out, I don't think you need to make this decision tonight, unless the board's wanting this information in April or May. Or June, though, but you certainly could, and like Mark said, we could decide to do it. Once a year, I have no problem sharing it with the board, but I do think long term, under the context, you need to decide. What are we using this for, is it just information for Gary and the district, and we're just reading it to be informed? Or are we using it for something else, and if that's the case, you should probably look at the questions. Tomorrow, I will forward the board, all the board, the questions that I chose, so you can see them. So maybe that'll help kind of determine what you want to do, and we put this on the agenda for next time. Tomorrow, I'll send you all the questions. Get an update, maybe on how many people have filled it out, I don't know if anything's changed in the last couple of weeks. And then you could vote next month to. Not be shared this data, I'll reach out to attorney, make sure there's no issues there, or see it once a year, twice a year, or whatever.
Yeah, I, I would be much more comfortable seeing the questions and getting a sign off from our attorney.
Is everyone?
So when this first came up for the exit interviews, I was the one that presented this, okay, and. My intention for this is for the actual board, and of course, the superintendent also. But in OSBA, they have, this is when we're going through the superintendent evaluation. And it says in there. We need that. That's where I got that from, the exit interviews from OSBA. That when you're doing your superintendent evaluation, you need to have materials, I know we talked about this, I've already asked for this to be on the agenda. And was told it will not be on the agenda, so I'm actually surprised that we're talking about this. I love the idea about doing it at the retreat or at the work session then, so that we, we can. Understand exactly what's going on and all be on the same page. But when I first brought this up, this was for the board and of course, the superintendent. The reason it came up for the superintendent evaluation was just because I personally felt that. I did not have enough information for the superintendent evaluation, that was something that came up. Afterward, at the spur of a moment, not when I was talking about the exit interviews, the exit interviews. Should be for the good of the district, you know, taking what, what's going on with different things, with our teachers. And Barry. I want to know about that, with our teacher, with our students. Why are they leaving, with our teachers, why are they leaving, this is part of our responsibility as a board. To do the best for, and with the superintendent, or the best for our school spirit. So that was the purpose of the exit interview. Was so that we can make good choices, good decisions for our district.
I don't disagree with that, I just disagree that the current. Model is going to give us that information. And I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that if that's our intent, then we need to change. What questions are we asking?
So I'm going to say this again.
Probably need to change what.
I, I'm going to say this again, that I really appreciate it, a little bit earlier, that we would put this on the agenda for later. Because when I was told that it would not go on the agenda tonight, then. I, I just took that out of my mind for a later date, so at this time, I'm not prepared for it. And even though I would love to talk about this, I would love to talk about it when I know we're going to talk about it.
Like I said. I'll reach out to OSBA, have Kristen mouth, like I said, I think. Key is to decide as a board. What you want to use this for. And if it's superintendent evaluation, I can tell you, OSBA is going to say, that's a bad idea, you shouldn't do it. Not that you couldn't do it, but collectively, we need to decide that, probably need to let the people know that are filling it out, this is what we're using this for. Right now, I think the context, we're sharing it out, hey, we're just looking for your feedback on your experience and further. So I think that will be step number one, get you the questions, so you can know what it is, the folks are being asked. Have the board decide what it is you're going to use these for. And be transparent with the. Putting these out to folks. Okay, I do have, I have one other late item, I'll pass. And again, something I bring them up, it is last minute, and so if you want to think about it, and. And to do this next month, that is fine as well, but it's not. Anything too abnormal, when the district declares surplus a piece of property that could have value over five thousand dollars and needs to come to the board for surplus. I just started talking to Dan about this late last week, so it just kind of got finalized today. We do want to surplus our, what we call our grasshopper zero turn mower. He listed some background here, it's just not fulfilling our needs, it's constantly needing service. It's also one of our only, or maybe the only piece of equipment that runs on diesel. So allow us to get everything on gas, which will make our life easier. Our plan is that we're going to buy a mower to replace this, costs around fifteen thousand dollars. If we can get, he thinks we could get certain, over five, maybe up to ten. On this, then it'll help us purchase our new mower, so what I'm, again, doesn't need to be done tonight, because it doesn't. It is an imperative that I surplus this tomorrow. But if the board's willing to surplus it tonight, that would be helpful if you get this process started.
I, I actually like this, I just want to know, is there a process, a timeline as to. Selling it versus buying it?
I'm not sure I understand the question, if we, if we surplus this tonight, Dan will look for the best way, sometimes we. Post and do a silent bid auction kind of thing, there's also district facilities, Michelle left. But we're a member of a email group of facility managers, or throughout all of Lane, the state of Oregon, every district facilities manager. We can post it on there and say. Either list it as a price, we're selling this for eighty-five hundred dollars. Or we figure out the new piece of equipment we're going to buy, talk to the shop, we'll give you sixty-five hundred on trade-in, okay, we're going to do that, so. But that'll just be decided by Dan, what I'm looking for you guys is just declaring these surplus.
Okay, so, so the question, would they? Would we buy the new mower before or after?
Depends.
Okay, and do we have the surplus, that would be my question, do we have the money to be able to, oh, thank you.
We'll use our typically something like this that we need to get right away, we'll use our maintenance facilities reserve account, which has. Around. Or the number off the top of my head, seven hundred thousand dollars. Buy our new mower for fifteen, if we sold this for six, that money would be positive.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. To approve. The grasshopper tunnels or mower, or whatever we get, but I'm going to. Make a motion to put the old mower in surplus and to buy a new mower.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to declare the surplus of this mower, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, so next is, we are moving to executive session under ORS one nine two dot six six zero. To I, to review and evaluate the performance of the chief executive officer or any other public officer. Employee or staff member, unless the person whose performance is being reviewed, evaluated, questioned, open hearing. There will not be any decisions made during the executive session, we will come back into session afterwards and entertain. A resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four slash eleven, and that will be the only business done. After the executive session. And for that, we have to have only the board involved. If you'd like to stay, if you're going to find us coming back in session, if you want to take a chair on the hallway, or go get cars, that's you, but unfortunately, that's just it. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Yes, that was definitely.
Can you hear us, Kathleen?
Yes, thank you.
We're just gathering folks that last wanted to come back in.
Sorry guys, I didn't speak up more. I had trouble hearing a lot of that, so I didn't mean to be a fly on the wall. My apologies.
No worries, sorry. Gavin, we move, you can come back up here if you want to move your table back.
Gavin, you stayed? Wow, extra credit for you. Just the other day, we, I started the paperwork for your $500 scholarship check for
Where are you going to use it? Where are you going to use it at? Where are you going to use that at? Lane, good. Just for general ed stuff or do you have a plan?
General ed.
Good. It's a great way to start.
I'll either do like civil science or criminal justice.
My first two years of school were at Lane.
Scooter for president.
What's that?
Gavin, scooter, scooter for president.
Scooter for president, okay. Yeah, he gave my vote. Better than anybody.
No, we got that? I don't, I didn't see anyone. I, I brought the door open.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and move forward with resolution 23 dash 24 slash 11 for the superintendent's contract renewal, which does require board action. Are you ready? Sorry, are you ready? Okay.
Is the Zoom started?
Yeah. I moved that we approved resolution number 23 dash 24 slash 11 to renew our, our actually to extend superintendent carpenter's contract.
We have an motion and a second to approve resolution 23 dash 24 slash 11 to extend superintendent carpenter's contract. Is there any discussion? Sure.
So his contract isn't up yet? But you would want to extend it to 20 years? I mean, till 27, but it's not up this year, right?
So in, in the contract language, there's he's always on a three-year contract. So
And you're just trying to extend that contract by one year to 27?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Or none? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Say aye. Did, did everyone vote?
No.
So you're abstaining?
I am.
Okay, so you need to declare that you're abstaining.
Okay, I'm going to abstain because I feel I didn't get the proper information that I needed for this evaluation.
All right, so we have, the motion does carry four to zero with one abst- 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 abstain. One person abstaining. All right, with nothing else, I'm just going, since we don't have the public here, I'm going to let everyone read the, what's coming up for the upcoming events because you should have seen it already. And without any objection, we are adjourned.
Okay.